Going to call the study session to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rozanski is absent.
It's now time for clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Dagel?
Yes, thank you for the item S-21. That's our budget amendment. So appreciate that we're going to be locking down some of those costs. And I noticed as well that we're going to be giving some business to Pacific Life, Newport Beach Company. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Number 16, street sweeping. I just wanted to verify that even though we are asking for bids for bi-weekly street cleaning, that will be something if there is a proposal, we'll come back to council. Is that correct? Okay.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Selich?
I have nothing.
Mayor Protem Hen?
Two items. Also on the street sweeping proposal, it looked a little confusing to me regarding the initial term of the contract. On page three of the Attachment A instructions, it talks about a two-year fixed term plus three one-year. And then later on, it talks about a five-year plus for five-year renewals. Which is it, Mark?
It'll be the five-year with five one-year because of the investment of the equipment for this size project. So I'll change that. That's the alley street sweeping term. Somehow, we must have mixed up the two.
All right. And then, so for that first five years, though, it will be a fixed price for the full five years, not subject to adjustment.
I don't believe we put a CPI increase in there.
Yeah. It's the way it read for the first two years, you know, but...
I'm sorry? For the second five? Okay, I'm being told CPI for the first five. Yeah, our normal contracts, every year, we do an adjustment for CPI increase. That's how the Newport Coast Refuge contract is. That's how most of our contracts are.
Well, I'd just be looking for a cap on that CPI increase like we've discussed in the past.
Correct.
Like not to exceed 3%, 2%?
You know, we'll talk about that at the time, but I just...
And I'll make sure that language is in there. I also didn't see it, so...
And then, just to verify, the equipment that we're talking about here is exclusively CNG-powered equipment.
CNG or LNG? It has to meet right there quality.
No diesel, biodiesel?
We cannot do that, no.
Okay. That's all. Oh, wait a minute, excuse me. Item number eight, this would be on the sole source purchase of Oasis Furniture. I'm curious if there were any other furniture solutions that were seriously considered and why or why not they were not further considered.
Steve or Dave Webb will come up and...
Actually, we went out, I believe the architect and Celeste and the gang looked at a lot of different styles and narrowed down into this particular type. And then they looked at the history of it. It's been used in various other places, Mission Viejo, Dana Point, I believe, Hook Hospital, and looked at durability. So once they got down to that level, we really kind of focused on that. We did take the samples out. The seniors tend to like it. We had it out, the annex out there for several weeks. Got a lot of comments on it. It was all favorable. So we decided this is probably the best bet, given what's available to us. The architect was real strong on this. The theme matched the building real well.
Okay. Are there any other examples we're going to be seeing of sole source for the Oasis project?
You may, we're going to do a furniture selection. We should go out to, they'll have to narrow it down to a type of furniture in the building, a modular unit or something, steel case or something. I guess if we did RFPs, I haven't got that worked out yet. I'm assuming we'll get something do RFPs, but it might come down to a sole source that we want this particular brand and this particular furniture. You're also going to see they did proposals on the fitness equipment. They did solicit proposals, but we are selecting a certain brand based on, we like that brand too.
You know, I could imagine that the furniture contract is going to be more sizable. There are lots of furniture system solutions and just for my own part nominate the idea that probably a sole source may not be appropriate for that one. But you'll make your judgments and then we'll see.
We'll take that back to our purchasing posts.
Thank you. Just one item. We will be pulling item 18 to give the council an update of where we are with this matter. Events are sort of moving faster than the agenda and also to give the city attorney some direction about how to modify the resolution in light of the reality of the applicants, that kind of thing. Dave, I understand you have an introduction to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am very pleased to introduce to the council and to the public Tracy McCrainer, who's our new administrative services director. I'd like to ask Tracy to come up briefly and our next agenda item isn't for three minutes. So you can tell yourself, tell briefly about yourself and then if council has some quick questions. But we're very happy to have Tracy on board. As you know, you met her on Saturday during the goal-setting session.
Well, good afternoon, council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you today. And I come from the city of San Diego. I worked there for 22 years, almost exactly to the day. My last post, all through the finance department. And my last post there was their director of financial reporting. And I've been through many changes from council manager to strong mayor and back. But it is a dream job to come here and I love the documented fiscal policies and the fiscal decisions that have been made. And it's just an overall great city. So I want to thank you very much and thank Dave for this opportunity.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
The next item are amendments to the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 5.42, regulating solicitation within the city. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy Walcott of our office will do the initial presentation on the issues related to solicitation ordinance.
Good afternoon. And I will not go into the details of time, place, and manner restrictions and other First Amendment issues. I know that this council is very well-educated in that area. We were asked to review our solicitation ordinance. That's in Chapter 542 of the municipal code, based on an experience, I believe, one of the council members had with an aggressive solicitor. And we were asked to look at what restrictions could be tightened up to provide residents with a little more privacy and protection in their home, both for peace of privacy purposes and for purposes of preventing fraud, you know, potential crime. In the past, we have heard from our, from police departments that some punitive solicitation is actually an attempt to, you know, sort of case out homes to see who is at home and to identify opportunities for crime. We took a look. 542 currently provides a lot of restrictions that we can continue to enforce. It provides some restrictions that we should amend to be consistent with current First Amendment law. And it also does still leave some opportunities for some further restrictions. Currently, it includes a requirement that no person or entity solicit within the city unless he or she is first applied for or received a registration card. And currently, that applies to both commercial and non-commercial entities. It prohibits any solicitation activity on all property, not just residential properties, between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. It prohibits the distribution and placement of handbills on residential properties and prohibits solicitation at residential properties when that property displays a no soliciting sign. And it prohibits solicitation in a number of public locations such as piers, beaches, parking lots, a number of other places. It also prohibits the placing of any handbill or other written material on any automobile or vehicle within the city, and that applies to both public and private property. Federal courts, we were asked to review and tighten the hours of restriction and I really wanted to find a defensible position that would allow us to prohibit solicitation after the evening hour, after dark, because like many residents of Newport Beach, the last thing I want is a knock on my door at 7:00 from someone I don't know. However, federal courts have consistently struck down attempts to restrict door-to-door solicitation in the daytime and evening, the evening hours prior to 9:00 PM. I detailed some of those cases in the staff report, but to briefly summarize, 1985 and 1986 federal court decisions prohibited solicitation across the board before 9:00 PM. Or prohibited cities from prohibiting it, excuse me, double negative. Specifically, in the Wisconsin Action Coalition v. City of Kenosha case, they said that while 9:00 PM was not a magically constitutional hour, and they recognized the city's interest in protecting the privacy and peace of their residents, they also noted that the increase that interest increased with the lateness of the hour. However, then they held the ordinance that prohibited soliciting between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM violated the First Amendment. The court also noted there was no case where any court had struck down a prohibition before 9:00. And the other case, the New Jersey Action Coalition case, the court also struck down a city ordinance that restricted evening solicitation. And it stated that the district court should have found that any regulation precluding canvassing before 9:00 PM violated the First Amendment. They said the city may draft an ordinance that protects, aimed at protecting the householders from annoyance, including intrusion in what they refer to as the hours of rest, but said the ordinances go beyond the usual hours of rest by prohibiting canvassing in the early evening. I disagree with the court. Personally, I was asleep by 8:00 on Sunday, but that's the law that we have and that we have to deal with. Looking at the remedy, what's currently in the Newport Beach Municipal Code is very defensible. That's no soliciting signs. And we encourage all residents who do not want to receive solicitation at any hour to place a non-solic, no soliciting sign where it can be seen on the house. Courts have seen this as an acceptable narrowly tailored restriction. However, personally, I don't think this provides enough protection to individuals who don't want to receive solicitation during the evening hours because this, a no soliciting sign may not be seen in the dark. And I don't, I think it's really reasonable to require the residents to, you know, have external illumination that illuminates the signs. We don't have glow and there are no soliciting signs as far as I know. One possible solution, which may push the envelope a little bit, is to have a no evening soliciting registry that's available through the municipal code where residents who are, first of all, willing to display a no soliciting sign and, second, willing to put themselves on a registry with the city, can register themselves as unwilling to receive evening solicitation, say, one half hour after sunrise, after sunset, excuse me. It pushes the envelope a little bit on federal law, but it may be an acceptable risk to take under the circumstances. Another issue that came up after we were first asked to look at this was the issue of unsolicited newspapers and tabloids which are delivered to homes within the city. Currently, newspapers and magazines are exempt from our solicitation ordinance by definition. We do define in the ordinance, any newspaper as any newspaper of general circulation as defined by state law, any newspaper duly entered with the post office in accordance with federal statutes, any periodical or magazine regularly published with not less than four issues per month and sold to the public. Therefore, some of these periodicals that are being thrown onto city driveways without solicitation, those may not come under our definition of newspapers. They may not be exempted. Therefore, those may be prohibited if a resident displays a no soliciting sign at their home. There were two 1994 cases that found municipal ordinance prohibiting distribution of unsolicited newspapers to properties that where the city allowed residents to opt out of receiving those papers were unconstitutional. Again, this may seem unreasonable. One of them had an opt-out list, which was struck down as unconstitutional, and one of them had no soliciting signs. The no soliciting sign was a California case, Fresno v. Press Communications. And this made us exempt newspapers from our ordinance in the 1998 edition of that ordinance. However, recent out-of-circuit federal cases indicates that in some areas, this interpretation may be loosening. There was a 2009 case which upheld the city's time, place, and manner restrictions. Those restrictions specifically stated that unsolicited materials had to be delivered in a certain manner. They had to be placed in a box, a delivery box, or the outside of a mailbox, or, let's see, on the front porch. It also allowed them to deliver between the interior or, and exterior door or to the resident, which I wouldn't personally recommend including if we did adopt restrictions like that. There was also a 2008 federal case which upheld an ordinance prohibiting delivery of unsolicited written materials to residents with a no soliciting sign, and their definition was broad enough to include newspapers. That's completely inconsistent with the earlier decision, but it is a recent decision. The clear protection for residents who do not want to receive newspapers is to contact the publisher and say that they don't want to receive them. Cases have been very consistent on this area. They say that the residents have a private right of trespass and that can be enforced. So that's the safest option for the city. We would also, if this situation is happening and the publishers are not respecting the request of the residents, we would like to be let know so that we can start compiling the data that would allow us to justify further restrictions in this area. Because of the California case in the Ninth Circuit, the time, place, and manner of delivery restrictions is probably the safest option for us if we wanted to make changes in that area. The other changes in First Amendment law since chapter adoption are the case that limits the ability of cities to enforce registration requirements against non-commercial speakers and also the case that forces a blanket, doesn't allow cities to enforce a blanket prohibition on leaving leaflets on vehicles. In 2002, the U.S. Supreme Court held that a city's requirement that individuals obtain permits prior to engaging in door-to-door advocacy and to display the permit containing an individual's name violated the First Amendment right to anonymous free speech. However, registration requirements for commercial solicitation can still be acceptable regulations. Currently, our ordinance does have a requirement for registration of non-commercial speech as well, which probably needs to be changed to be consistent with current First Amendment However, there are some potential things that we can do in this area. One is to remove the registration exemption in Chapter 542 for persons or entities that have Newport Beach business licenses and their employees and independent contractors. Currently, I talked with the revenue manager about this. What is happening is that commercial solicitors, persons who make their living doing commercial solicitation, are soliciting on behalf, purportedly on behalf of non-commercial entities. And they are, some of these organizations are the ones who will bus groups of kids in from out of state or out of the area. And then they give a portion of that solicitation to, you know, a portion of what they take in that solicitation to the nonprofit that they're advocating on behalf of. If they are a commercial entity doing business within the city, they are required to get a city business license. So if we removed that exemption and made entities that have city business licenses go back on the solicitation registration, that would give us some control or some knowledge of which entities are out there soliciting door-to-door in our residential neighborhoods, contact information, a certain amount of accountability if they are not respecting the no solicitation signs. I understand that there was a question about Los Angeles's information cards for charitable solicitors and it did contact the city of Los Angeles and review their restrictions. I like their restrictions a lot. However, talking with their attorney, I'm not comfortable with recommending that the city of Newport Beach adopt something similar, although I would like to talk to their PD who administers it and find out how it worked for them. The changes that put that in place were adopted about two months before the Mentor in the Lake case, which said that you couldn't have non-commercial registration. I don't believe they've been challenged on it, but their ordinance was adopted before the law clarifying that they couldn't do that was in place. Other than that, do you have any questions?
Councilmember Gardner?
This came up, actually, not because of the incident I had, although that made it interesting, from the Chrono Mar Residents Association, just people on it. And after I had my incident, which was just somebody coming up and when I said politely, "I'm not interested telling me to profanely deal with myself," I got emails from other people saying I had the same thing happen. So obviously, there's some pretty aggressive soliciting going on out there. And when I, I must say, I was very disappointed in your report, not, not your work, but what you had to say. I would suggest, because this is something, as I say, it's of great interest to a lot of people. It's not a matter of worrying about the Girl Scouts. It's a matter of having some people that are more than aggressive and just being bothered when you don't want to be bothered. To, I would like us to ask for our ordinance to be amended to include whatever we can to increase our control and make it easier. And then I would also suggest that, as Mr. City Manager, in your, one of your newsletter issues, which goes to everybody, that we convey what individuals can do. If we, if we can get a list, then they can sign up for the exclusion list, if we, at least they can put the sign out and that sort of thing, so we can educate them as much as possible. So those would be my suggestions.
Thank you. Councilman Selich?
Yeah, I live on a very busy street and we get a lot of, just call them unsavory characters that, you know, you virtually have to shove them off of your property to get rid of them, as Councilman Gardner said, they can get very aggressive. And we seem to get more than our share just because of the street that we're on. So I'm in support of taking this as far as we can. I really like the idea of the, of the registry and, I mean, I'd do that in a heartbeat. It's just like getting on a do-not-call list on all the junk calls that you get. So I would think that would be something that would really be attractive to our residents to be able to get on something like that, you know, to at least limit this in the evening hours when, I think that's when people get more concerned about it. So, as Councilman Gardner said, I'd support going as far as we can on this.
Mr. Webb?
I'm confused. You mentioned that, that non-commercial people can't be required to register, but commercial people can unless they're...
There's been some confusion whether they are non-commercial or commercial. And so I believe the revenue department was advised by the city attorney's office back in the early 2000s not to enforce the ordinance.
Okay, so if we get a kid that's coming by that's trying to sell magazines, is that commercial or non-commercial?
Usually, they'll say that they are, they are raising funds for their school or something along those lines or...
Well, it's usually, I'm earning, I'm earning points to go to, to some, to earn some sort of a trip to go somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that commercial or non-commercial?
I heard from a resident this weekend about somebody who, a solicitor in her neighborhood, it was in Dover Shores, who the story just kept changing what they were soliciting for. First, it was the Newport Harbor High School band and then it was for something else entirely.
Yeah, or the other, the other approach is that I'm one of your neighbors that lives up on such-and-such a street and I recognize the name of the street, but I'm pretty sure that they're not living at that location. So, but, so we have no ability to, usually I scare them away by saying, "Can I see your city registration card?" And usually, they don't have one. I says, "Well, I don't talk to anybody without a registration card," which as a private citizen I can do, and usually that causes them to go away. But can we ask, is it, do they have, what you're telling me is that we can't require them to have registration cards?
The city, based on the current federal law, it does not appear that the city can require a non-commercial, a person who is doing non-commercial solicitation, either, you know, political fundraising, religious proselytizing, that sort of...
Okay, I understand religious proselytizing, but I'm, I'm talking about magazines or some other product that they're, that they're trying to sell. It seems like to me that's clearly commercial.
Councilmember, I would love to say something, anything is clear under free speech law, First Amendment, but I'm afraid it's, it would probably put myself at risk in saying it. What I do hear, however, is a sentiment on the part of at least those council members who've expressed it, that we should take this to the farthest extent reasonably allowed by law, commercial, non-commercial, define it better than Justice Douglas defined obscenity and go forward and proceed with a reasonable but assertive ordinance that would manage this type of solicitation. I think we've given you an ideas to the complexities we'll have to deal with, and I think we can come back with something structured along those lines.
One more. If you have a no solicitation sign up, that still doesn't prohibit the religious proselytizer?
Yes, yes, it does.
It does?
That can produce, that can prohibit non-commercial speech as well.
Okay.
Under ordinance, solicitation is defined as non-commercial speech as well as commercial.
And we can also talk to the PD about aggressive conduct in the context of solicitation, albeit if it's not protected First Amendment speech, because aggression is not protected First Amendment speech, there could be a penal code violation in that context and provide citizens with their alternatives regarding that type of conduct.
Mayor Protem Hen?
Just a question regarding this registry. So if we require this registry and a person does register, that, an individual registers that they do not want to be solicited, then when somebody goes to the city to get a registration card, will they be given a list of residences that...
Yes.
They may not call on?
That would be our procedure, that when they register with the city as an individual who is going to do commercial solicitation, and I know that leaves a hole for non-commercial, then they would be given an updated list. And we would have to write something in the ordinance about how long that list was good for and how updates would be handled.
Well, all right. I certainly agree with the other sentiments expressed here that it would be good to take this as far as we can take it, so...
Just a couple of questions. First of all, it relates to political speech, canvassing, leafleting, et cetera, associated with a political campaign. None of these restrictions are applicable to any of that speech. Is that correct?
Unless an individual homeowner is displaying, or a resident is displaying a no solicitation sign at their home.
No soliciting sign, okay. And I was a little bit confused, do we or don't we have the ability to prohibit leafleting on windshields and that kind of thing for commercial purposes?
The city's St. Clemente does not like the answer that they got from the Ninth Court, Ninth Circuit decision a few months ago. The Ninth Circuit decision that I talked about in the staff report said that it was a violation of the First Amendment rights to do a blanket restriction on placing leaflets on vehicles. Their remedy for that was that individuals should display no handbills signs on their dashboard. This is not a solution I liked. I'm about ready to ask the city manager to send out a no handbills sign with his newsletter so that everybody can display one in the city. However, the city's St. Clemente is considering filing cert with the U.S. Supreme Court. I've talked with their city attorney. They have not filed it yet. I don't know if the decision's been made. We could leave it as it is and wait to see what they do and then update the, that portion of the ordinance as we need to if they do not file. However, at this point, there's a decision saying that we shouldn't enforce it.
Okay. Well, colleagues, am I correct that we have a consensus that we should ask the city attorney to come back with what they believe to be the most legally defensible ordinance that tightens up these provisions, as indicated by Councilmember Gardner? Okay.
All right.
Go forth.
Thank you.
The next item is consideration of issues regarding possible conflict of interest regulations regarding the quote "renter conflict issue." Mr. City Attorney?
Can I cut to the chase on this?
Sure.
Because this was mine and you've answered my question with this and I, so I don't know that we need to go any, spend a lot of time on it, but just, I had asked because it occurred to me that we have commissions and that it's all, as far as conflicts of interest tend to be ownership. And yet, I could see someone who lives in a home and is on the PBNR and he rents, but there's a tree that bothers him and something comes up about the tree. And to me, that would be a conflict of interest or, I mean, so I could see things like this. But it suggests to me that we do have, that there are, this has been considered and that there are some situations where even though you're, you're not owning the place, you're renting it, you may have a conflict. And so that was what I wondered. And I would just suggest that, that we let our commissioners know that if, this is a consideration and if they have a question, they should contact the city attorney's office.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll make sure that word gets out and that's one of the benefits of the AB 1234 type of trainings, which we're going to conduct again in another couple of months for those who did not receive it. So, thank you.
Okay, I mean, the rest of you can talk about it if you want, but since it was my question, I...
Thank you, council member. I applaud the cut-to-the-chase approach here. I think that's a good abode for this year. Are there any other comments on this?
Well, do you appreciate knowing what your opinion is on the issue in terms of if someone has a lease or they're renting month-to-month, how does that work?
Basically, the law works, first of all, it's a factually specific determination, so I can't give an opinion that addresses any particular factual situation unless I have those facts. But if a leasehold is worth $2,000 or more and falls within 500 feet of the actual place of decisions being made regarding, then it's basically presumed to have a financial interest and the person who has the leasehold is to declare the, declare the conflict and recuse themselves. On the other hand, a month-to-month tenancy is exempted from the definition of leasehold and financial interest and is presumed to not have a financial interest. So if an individual on one of our boards of commissions or if the council has a month-to-month tenancy, then they're not presumed to have a conflict even if they're within the 500 feet. So I understand there's a situation that gave rise to that initial aspect of the question and the, our review of that situation is, is that it was appropriately... and our review of that situation is, is that it was appropriately handled. Common law conflicts are more squishy and really need to be addressed on a fact-by-fact, case-by-case situation, and we do recommend people come to us if they have a question and they feel like they might be getting into a problem.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is the contracted water meter reading and monthly utility billing. Mr. Kiff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. George Murdock's going to come up to introduce the item, and then I believe Craig Justice will present it, and we'll try to keep, although we're half an hour in advance, I don't want you to talk slowly, George, because we'll just move things up from the end, but, George Murdock.
Good afternoon, oh, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. As the city manager said, I want to introduce our new deputy director, who will present on a couple items that we have on the agenda this afternoon. One of the items is the potential of an alternate source of water from the desalination, and Craig's invited some folks from Poseidon and Modoc here to answer your questions. But first up is the contract meter reading. Craig, we'll go over a little bit the RFP process and seek your direction into the monthly reading issue, monthly reading, which would give us the ability to do monthly billing. So with that, I'll introduce Craig Justice, my deputy director.
Thank you, George. It's my pleasure to be here this afternoon and meet you all for the first time. And although I have a brief presentation today on contract meter reading and utility billing, I've also asked a representative from a meter contract company to come in, Mr. Jim Beck, I don't see him in the audience now, but he'll probably be here shortly, to give you a little insight into why contracting kind of makes sense and some value contracting brings to the table for the city, in particular, technology improvements that they have available to them that we don't. So if you don't mind, I'll head on into the presentation here. And so the matter before you this evening is a staff recommendation to issue a RFP for a contract water meeting, meter reading, and also moved from bimonthly billing to monthly utility billing. That's the primary staff recommendation this evening. To provide a little background on why staff's making this recommendation, as part of the ERIP and restructuring, the utilities department and Director Murdock and myself took a pretty hard look at our organization and services to determine how we can improve things and provide improved services for the city. One of the divisions that we looked pretty closely at was water meter division. It's a division of eight that's now been restructured to six staff members. Some of the goals that we set out for ourselves in the organizational restructuring was to look at contract meter reading, was to try to improve customer service, was to change from bimonthly to monthly billing mainly for improved customer service and for our residents so that they can better track water conservation and water usage. Also to advance, a couple programs that we've been trying in the recent years to advance but have been, it's been difficult. One is water meter replacements and expand installation of automatic water meter readings, meters, which allow us to essentially drive by and automatically read meters. It's a more efficient way to do things. So the first step in kind of achieving these goals I just outlined was to consider issuing an RFP for contract meter reading services. This essentially sets the stage for monthly reading. We can't do monthly reading without, monthly billing, I'm sorry, without monthly reading. So we need to do the contract meter reading before we go to monthly billing. And it also provides, frees up resources for staff to really push forward these programs I just talked about, the meter replacements, the AMR installations. And the situation we're in without contract meter reading currently with the six staff, we could continue with bimonthly meter reading if you would like, but we wouldn't really be able to enhance the customer service aspects of what I talked about with existing staffing levels, or really advance the meter replacement or the AMR program, which we think is real important. You know, meters that don't read correctly cause incorrect billing, causes a lot of rework with our customers, and also lost revenue through improper meter reads. So that's some of the background of why we're heading in the direction we are. The concept for the contract meter reading is to first implement a program to do half the city. So we go out, get a contractor to do half the city zones three and four, which I outlined in my council report. We estimate that cost to be roughly $155,000. That equates to about 95 cents per meter, which is, we checked around, and that's kind of the industry average right now. Irvine Ranch Water District just contracted four meter reading, and it was a 95 cents per meter, so we feel pretty confident the cost is around that ballpark.
Is that for a month, per year?
That's a cost per meter, per year, annual cost. No, no, I'm sorry, it's per month. So it's a 95 cents per month cost per meter. So if you times that by 12, it gives you the thing.
And for comparative purposes, do you know what our per meter cost is today to read meters?
Yes, I do. We did a rough calc of our costs, labor, vehicles, materials, it's about the same cost, 95 cents to a dollar. So we have a pretty economical program now. The problem, the challenge is the resources and enough staff available to get us there with monthly reading. That's the challenge we face.
Sorry, Craig, so you're saying our cost for bimonthly reading is 95 cents per meter per month again, or?
Yeah, if you equate apples to apples, monthly reading, you know, us versus contractor...
Sounds like we're roughly twice as expensive.
No, no, we're about the same cost.
Okay, because you've annualized our bimonthly reading, but they're doing it monthly? I'm still struggling with that a little bit, sorry, maybe I'm the only one in the room that's doing that, but...
Sure, no problem. Irvine Ranch is doing it on a monthly basis at about, and their contract cost was 95 cents per meter per month.
Okay.
If you, if you take our costs, you can convert them to a monthly basis.
I see.
Apples to apples, we're comparatively about the same cost, 95 cents to a dollar per meter per month.
Do you have any metrics on how many meters are read per month if you sort of look at the two agencies? I mean, presumably, people get a route that they do that day, is that kind of how it works?
Yes, typically, they're done on a route, that's correct.
Okay, and you walk your route, you're incentivized to walk your route that day?
Correct.
Okay, and then what do our routes look like compared to the other agency in terms of meters per day or so on?
That's a good question. I know, I don't know exactly how they compare, I know they do it in a similar fashion than we do. We have four routes in the city, and they're done, they're done in a manner that's most time-efficient, and it makes sense. And I know Irvine does it the same way, but I don't know exactly how many meters they have in comparison to our service area.
Is there any opportunities to revise routes in a way that there would be more meters read on a daily basis?
Sure, there are always ways to economize and do things more efficiently, yes, absolutely. And we'll be looking at that as well.
Let me just follow up on the city manager's point then, because I want to make sure we have the cost per meter read correctly.
Okay.
So if our annualized cost is 95 cents per month, that means it's basically costing us $1.90 to $2.00 per by month to read the meters currently. Is that accurate? That's how you would get to 95 cents a month?
No, the way I did it was, no, it's 95...
Or does it cost us 95 cents to read the meter, which we read?
Yes, bimonthly.
Bimonthly, okay.
Correct, that's correct. I'm sorry, it took a while to get that.
So basically, then, we're looking at doubling of the cost to go to, as you would expect, to go to monthly reading?
Correct.
Okay.
The per meter, I'm sorry, the per meter cost is the same, but you're reading the meter twice, twice as much, so.
Okay.
So, to completely beat this horse to death...
I'm sorry if I was, that's been confusing, it's my fault.
You did say that you've made some changes, though, that reduced your cost by $86,000, so this cost comparison is after consideration of those cost reduction initiatives that you've implemented?
The $155,000 doesn't factor in the restructuring cost reductions that we implemented. So if you minus, if you minus the 185 to 86, that's what the additional cost is currently to do half the city meter reading.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on a little bit, be happy to answer questions after I'm done here as well. And the concept is a contractor will complete the meter reading only. We do a lot of other services in the meter division, turn-ons, turn-offs, contractor support, meter replacements, maintenance, billing, questions, a whole host of customer service activities. But the contractor will just do the more repetitive, routine task of meter reading, which makes the most sense to us. And like I said, city staff, citywide, will continue to support customer service, meter replacements, questions, and billing, and all that, all those types of aspects. So where we're heading to give you kind of a look ahead, so if we're, if this is approved and we were successful in getting a warrant to contract, we would get the contractor on board, they do have, we'd work with the contractor to look at the routes, as Councilmember Dagle pointed out, to get them as efficient as we can, they got a lot of experience doing this thing. And we'd evaluate also integration with our existing programs, our meter replacement that I talked about, our AMR program. And if we're successful, we look at implementing contract meter reading citywide and have them do that task for us. The estimated cost of that is about $310,000 to do full citywide contract meter reading. If you compare that to what would it cost us to do the same program, we'd have to hire about four additional staff members. And if you take into account the, that cost, plus the restructuring savings that we just talked about, and the equipment and technology upgrades we need to really compete, because they have, contract companies have, PDAs have on-the-fly, in-the-field technology that they can use to read meters. We have technology that we enter and input, we have to bring it back to the office and then download the information. So if you take all those factors in consideration, the costs are pretty comparable to contracting versus us having to have additional resources. We've chose the contracting because that kind of makes the most sense over the long haul with salaries, with benefits, retirements. Contracting over in the long run is probably a more economical way to go. So that's why we're making that recommendation to you today. I'd like to now move into some of the benefits. What do we get from, in particular, monthly billing? I think it's important that staff outline those benefits to you. Firstly, I think it helps promote, we think it helps promote water conservation. Water is getting more expensive, it's going to be more important that people track their water consumption to try to economize water as much as possible. Monthly billing and the bar charts and the water usage will allow our customers to better, you know, track water usage and be able to have more control over their bills. And I think that's an important. It also allows us, on a city basis, utilities to track citywide consumption and cost and flow on a cost and flow of water on a monthly basis versus a bimonthly. So it gives us more data to really, data crunch to, for water conservation. It kind of gets us in line with, consistent with other municipal billing, with gas, electric, most of those are on a monthly basis. Important aspect is it eliminates, in talking to revenue division, it eliminates delinquent billing. Right now, about 10% to 15% of our bills per cycle are delinquent, that we have to send out an additional billing to collect payment. That equates out to about $50,000 a year that we spend on rebilling to collect payments. Through monthly billing, we'll have the opportunity to, on a monthly cycle, give people the bills, give people on the next cycle, the next billing cycle, be able to let them know that they're late in their payment and that please make their payment. So in turn, we think we're going to reduce delinquent payments. We can't really quantify to what extent, but we think we're going to get some reduction in delinquent payments from our customers. Another important aspect is the ability to catch sooner water leaks and billing problems. In other words, right now, we're on a bimonthly cycle, we only go out there once every two months. So we miss a lot of things. And we miss a lot of water leaks, we miss a lot of problems out in the field that where meters, where water continues to run for leaks that we don't find, that customers don't see. Allows us to better catch problems, and also that'll reduce costs. Another important aspect, it'll support in the future, possible tiered water conservation rate structure, which our department has been looking at and will continue to look at, to see if that's the most, the best program for the city, and we'll be talking to council in the future about that. But we can't support that program without monthly billing. It's just, you just don't have the data to really support the tiered rate structure. You need to have monthly billing. And lastly, an improved cash flow. So if you, on a bimonthly basis, and the cash flow meaning we get payment on a monthly basis, we get the money in the bank, interest rates are a little higher, we get some interest, we get better interest on that, on our monies in the bank. Those are some of the upsides. It's kind of downsides, there is a downside to it, mainly it's a cost. The cost of monthly billing is going to cost about $97,000 a year for monthly billing, for 12 cycles versus six. However, the, if you look at the offsets and efficiencies we get with monthly billing, we get, I talked about a $50,000 elimination of the delinquent billing, which we can decrease from that. Plus, we really feel strongly that we'll get a good bang for our buck for, to come on shut offs and turn ons. Every time we have a delinquent bill, someone doesn't pay, we have to go out and turn, someone has to go out, turn the water off, and then turn it back on once they pay the bill. So we believe that the elimination of the delinquent billing plus that staff time plus, is going to, you know, offset almost all that, or a good portion of that cost. The rest is really value that we give to our customers, in my opinion. The monthly billing is better for them to track costs and all those factors that I talked about, water conservation. That's the real value we get, I think, for that additional cost that monthly billing will cost us. Another downside is the kind of personalized service. I think that if you look at, now we have city's crews going out there, that our customers see, you know, Joe on a bimonthly basis and talks, and they provide, you know, these are seasoned people that we have working for us. With contracting, you lose a little bit of that, you know, it's not Joe anymore, it's someone from the service going out there to read their meters. So you lose, I think, a little bit of personalized service, but it shouldn't be, you know, detrimental. I think that the companies are well-versed in personalized service, they look good, they go out, they'll be sharp if we do end up hiring a company, they'll look sharp, they'll hire, they'll have nice trucks, they'll say the right things and do the right things, but we do lose that, you know, city personalized service. Just a quick other things, and I'll, to conclude my talk. A little quick note on meter replacement and AMR expansion. You know, to really push forward those programs, we really need contract meter reading, we need the additional time to be able to go out and do meter replacements and to expand the automatic meter reading program. So that really sets the stage for that. And we'll, over the next, say we're, if we're successful in getting a contractor, we'll be evaluating that over the next few months on how the best way it is to do that. We're not sure yet exactly the systematic way we're going to replace meters and implement the automatic meter read system, but we'll be evaluating that, evaluating options of the AMR system. Should it be a drive-by where you get the, you get it, you read through a laptop, or should it be wireless where you can get, you know, wireless signals sent over the wavelengths? So we'll be evaluating those things. And to give you a little bit of cost information on just how much these costs, a residential direct read meter costs us about $65 per meter. That's parts and labor to install it. That's a NEPTU meter is our typical standard that can be upgraded to AMR, to automatic meter reading if we want to. In comparison, a residential AMR meter is about $275. So that gives you a sense of scope and cost and relationship to if we wanted to go the next step with technology and really go there. So the really bang for your buck is approved efficiency you get with automatic meters.
I'm confused. The one kind that's $65, you said it can be upgraded to automatic?
It can be upgraded, they become upgradable, so it's a manual read meter that has the capability of being upgraded in the future if you'd like to upgrade it.
And that would cost an additional 200?
Yeah, because I, why would, if that can be upgraded, we buy it for $65, at a certain
point, we upgrade it for some cost.
Yeah.
But how much? Because why then would we buy the $270 one?
Yeah, that's true. Oh, let me clarify that.
Unless I'm not clear about the costs.
Well, the, no, you're correct, that was astute observation, Councilmember Gardner. The residential direct reads for $65 are upgradable, there is a cost associated with upgrading it, it's not 275, 275 would be for a full-on AMR meter, brand-new, installed right away. The upgradable cost is $65 plus the... The upgradable cost is $65, plus the upgrade cost, which I believe is about $40, $50 to upgrade the meter.
And you get the same technology?
Well, no, it isn't. It's a, it's a, it's like, how do I equate it? It's like getting a, you know, souping up your car versus buying a brand-new car at a, at a dealer. The, the resident, the new AMRs are, would be the latest technology, it's an integrated system, it's a better system than the Neptune meter that's upgraded to another, because it's battery, it's, it's the way the technology is implemented, the Neptune upgrade meters, you insert the AMR component into it, it's battery operated, it's, it's not as robust as the, the AMR standalone system that goes in. So there's downsides to upgrading. They're not as good, I guess that's the way to, way to frame it. Okay? Lastly, I want to give you quickly, a little, little heads up on the implementation schedule. Should we move, we move forward? This is kind of the, how it would, it would be sequenced. We'd issue the RFP in January 2010. January and February would be, would be the announcements and utility billing of the, of the monthly billing change. So we do some public information on, on announcing the monthly billing. The penetration system would be upgraded in about February by the Revenue Division. We'd, we'd come back to council in roughly February to award a contract for contract meter reading. The contract would start about March.
We're going to issue, and we're going to authorize an RFP on January 26th, issue it, evaluate it, and award it in two weeks, three weeks?
At, at the end of February 23rd meeting, correct?
We're allowing two weeks.
Yes, two, three weeks. The contract would start in March, roughly, 2010. We anticipate that we could start monthly billing around April 1st, 2010. And then over the next course of several months, we'd evaluate the contract services and, as I talked about, to see how it's working with the contractor, also the AMR and, and meter replacement program that I discussed. And then we prepare, you know, plans to do the meter replacements and, and AMRs in the future. So that's kind of the sequence of the, of how things would go. The dates, they, they could slide, I understand your concern, they could slide a little bit, depending on how things go, if we get any hangups with the, with the RFPs and, and evaluating them, that could slip a little bit, correct? So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to ask and answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Justice? Let me, let me, Mr. Mayor, well, a couple of things. We heard this discussed by Director Murdock at our Gold City Workshop on Saturday, so I'm sort of convinced that there's good policy and management reasons to do this. I'm not at all convinced that we have a good handle on the mathematics of the savings and the financing of this. And so when this comes back, I would really like to see a very succinct and tightened-up and well-put-together analysis of costs and benefits and, and net costs of what we really think this is going to have in terms of a budget impact, particularly in this budget year.
Correct, do you notice?
Yes, I would agree, I, I really don't understand the net costs here, so that would be really helpful.
Okay.
And you're right, there's, there's a cost to hire the outside people, and then there's a question of, you know, what efficiencies we really gain. And in terms of this meter reading in general, I know, working in telecommunications where, you know, whenever there's lots of moving parts and pieces, that things often go to just total turnkey and that risk gets shifted to the vendor. I mean, how much within this is, are there turnkey vendors out there that will just kind of do the whole thing, soup to nuts? And what are your thoughts on that?
There, there are people that'll come in to do turnkey systems, absolutely. We'd have to, I think a few years ago, that was evaluated, and we were planning to revisit that during this period, during the evaluation period I talked about, to see which direction, if that was the right direction to head or not.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Webb?
When I look at, actually, out walking the other day and had a little chat with one of your meter readers and watched him go through the process, and, and from a mechanical meter reading standpoint, you go along, you pull the cover off, you flip the lid up, you make your reading, and you punch it into your little sidewalk computer, which tells you, I think those computers give you an idea of what the previous month's usage was, so that gentleman could really, at that particular point, see if there was a large change.
Correct.
That's not the point I want to make. The other point is that if you have an automatic meter, you go from a situation where you have a purely mechanical device that is quite often in a box that's underwater, because if you get a leaky, leaks around it, and you have some sort of electrical component that has to be protected. What is the, the, I guess, the maintenance of an automatic meter in terms of number of times per year it needs to be serviced, as opposed to just the mechanical meters?
Yes. Well, definitely, you just, the, the AMR meters, they're called, you just can't put them in and leave. They're typically, they're, they have to have power, so there's just a battery.
So you have, you have a battery that has to be changed?
Right, correct.
Every three or four years, or?
I think every couple of years.
Okay.
They last quite a long time, but a year to two years, depending on usage. They, they typically are fairly accurate and maintain their accuracy pretty well. They can have problems, if, technical difficulties, if, you know, if you drive, there's two types of system, the wireless systems and then the drive-by systems that pick up the signal. Sometimes the, there'll be problems, disruptions in the signal, and there's electronics involved in the, the AMR meters that can go out and go bad, electronic parts. But in comparison, they're typically less, less maintenance overall than a, than a manual meter. The, the, the problem with the manual meter is that over time, it just, the, the meter reading deteriorates and the internal components deteriorate and is just not as accurate.
But that's probably 10 years.
Yeah, five to 10 years or so, correct.
Okay. What is the, the average cost for reading an automatic meter per, per month as opposed to?
Yeah.
It's 95 cents, but you would seem like that the automatic meter would be pennies.
Pennies, that's correct, it's a significantly less. I, I don't know the exact figure offhand, I'll, I'll have to report back to you with it.
You still need to have somebody that drives past the meter in a car?
Correct.
So you're still going to have a personnel that'll just be able to do maybe five or six times more meters per day?
A huge amount of, it's way more efficient. You can do a huge amount of meters, you can actually have a laptop, drive an area and pick up literally 100 meters within just a few minutes.
Okay.
Just streams of data into the database. And, and also you have less errors, too. The manual meters are manual entry. So they, they're keyed in. So you have that human error factor that's now eliminated as well with automatic meters.
Councilman Selich?
If you have these wireless meters, is there still a dial that the homeowner can go out and read if he wants to monitor his, his water usage?
If there isn't, we'll put one in for him, for sure. But it has, it has a, it has a reading, so you can still read it, sure.
So you'll still be able to read your own meter?
Yeah.
And, you know, as I said at the retreat, I've put these wireless sub-meters in our apartment complexes, and have worked very well, but they're all above ground. The comment that Councilman Webb brought up about having these batteries down in, underground, because I know that my meter box gets flooded all the time.
Yeah.
That, that kind of concerns me.
Yeah, electronic, water and electronic equipment doesn't go well, that's true. They, their housing and the way they're installed, they're semi kind of waterproof. So unless you get a breakdown of the, the body mechanism, typically they'll be okay. They can be submerged and they'll still work. But, but, but they can malfunction because of, you know, heat's another thing with electronics, heat and water is, both are, they, they wear and tear on electronic equipment.
Is there, is there like any kind of track record on what the failure rate of these is? As a percentage of the meters you put in? Because I assume you have to factor that into the whole program, what kind of failure rate you're going to have.
That would, absolutely, and I don't have that exact figure off the top of my head, I don't know. But that's part of the analysis we have to do to, to figure out, you know, which AMR system to put in, wireless, do we go to, just go to the wireless system directly and just forego this, the drive-by system? So your, your points are well taken, and something we have to, as staff, do a better job to do the analysis to figure out which direction to head.
Mayor Pro, Tim Hinn?
Yeah, I'm guessing that the manufacturers have anticipated were problems like submersion and that sort of thing, but maybe not, so we'll find out more about that.
Correct.
As I mentioned on Saturday, I would encourage you to be sure to keep an eye out toward this Wi-Fi technology, because I think the gas and electric utilities are seriously experimenting now with Wi-Fi capability that provides for automated, real-time, continuous reading of these usage rates with nobody even driving around to do it, and provides real-time, immediate feedback to homeowners for savings and that sort of thing. So I think that probably is the wave of the future, and it might be a more economic way to go, once the electric and gas utilities have installed the Wi-Fi technology backbone to support it. So you want to keep an eye on that.
Good point, that's a point well taken.
Any other questions? If I, if I could, then I think the, the consensus is, is, you know, we may not be quite ready to launch here, let's bring this, let's proceed, but let's bring this back with some more detailed financial analysis about the cost and budget impacts on this, and let's make also sure that we're confident about where we're going in terms of the technology issues. I think I've summarized my colleagues' comments on this.
Have a quick suggestion, Mr. Mayor, along those lines. You don't technically have to authorize us to issue an RFP, we can do that. I'm of the mindset that I might authorize the issuance of this RFP and then come the, the time when I think it's most valuable to use, the analysis is with the responses. So if, if the council is comfortable with that, that's the direction I would head. And then give the kind of detailed analysis you've requested when those responses come back.
I think that's wise, then we can deal with real numbers.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next item is the proposed Ocean Water Desalination Project in Huntington Beach. We are running ahead of schedule, do we need to skip and go to the next item?
Don't see the Poseidon folks here, but I do see the folks for the next item here.
And then why do we go?
I did, a while back, there's, there's Greg back there, so we might be able to just flip those over.
Right, well, let's go then to item six, Amendment to Chapter 14.17, Water-Efficient Landscaping in Newport Beach Municipal Code. Mr. City Manager?
So Greg Ramirez from the Planning Department will introduce this one, along with Kay Sims here for backup. So we'll give Greg a minute or two to queue up the PowerPoint.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council, Greg Ramirez from the Planning Department. And the item for you today is the proposed Title 14.7, the Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance. And this was originally scheduled, I believe, to go before the City Council back in October, but then it was pulled and it was requested that we bring it back here for a study session item. So what I want to do this afternoon is briefly go over this, this item here, and I'm going to talk about kind of the why we're here, the AB 1881, and then I want to jump a little bit ahead, do the applicability of, basically, so everybody understands which types of projects this would apply to upfront, before we start talking about some of the details, so everybody kind of has a grasp on when it will apply and who would be affected when we talk about those details. And then, of course, I want to talk about our options for compliance, the city's options for compliance, sort of what, what we can do, and that's where we'll talk about the Orange County model and then our proposed ordinance. And then finally, I want to talk about, should this proposal and this ordinance be adopted, how somebody would, would process their plans to the city. So I'm going to jump straight ahead to the why we're here, and that's State Assembly Bill 1881. Basically, it was, the goal was to pass landscape irrigation ordinance that's designed to help consume, not consume, the opposite, reduce water consumption. Basically, the requirements are local agencies, they have to adopt an, the state model ordinance or something at least, at least effective as by January 1st, 2010 this year. Then the local agencies report to the Department of Water Resources, who is the state agency that's overseeing this, this project by the end of the month, by the end of January. And then finally, Department of Water Resources has to report back to the state legislature on where, where they are with implementing this and where the, all the local jurisdictions So like I said, I want to jump now to the applicability, and this, this basically comes from state, the state law, and this would be incorporated into our ordinance. When this, when this would apply, when would people have to have these landscape plans that, that we'll talk a little bit more later about in the model ordinance, what are the thresholds? The first for developer projects and then also non-residential projects is 2,500 square feet of landscaping. For residential projects, it's 5,000 square feet of landscaping. So that, those are the basic thresholds. Now, the system design thing, the maximified water allowance, that's some of the technical calculations that would have to be included in, in the landscape documentation package. There's this ET adjustment factor of 0.7, and if you have any technical questions, I have Shane Berkeley here, our water conservation coordinator, he can help answer some of those technical questions. Just like most regulations, especially those with planning, there are always exemptions to when these, these types of requirements apply. In this particular case, you know, some land, some landscape rehabilitation projects would be exempt, botanical gardens, hazard reduction and fuel mods, those types of things would be exempt from, from any requirements. Skip up here to one of the key definitions of determining when these requirements would apply is the definition of landscaped area. And essentially, think of the landscaped area as any area that's irrigated, that has pipes pumping water. Non-irrigated areas, for example, such as a bluff that's non-irrigated, a bluff on Ocean Boulevard where there's no pipe irrigation, it would, that would not count toward that 5,000 square foot threshold. And what I'm going to do with the threshold, I'm going to focus more on the residential aspect, but of course, we can talk about how this would apply to, to non-residential This exhibit here basically just shows essentially what would and would not be counted. Whoops. I just turned my PowerPoint on.
I think it's answered on the screen.
Keyboard, there we go. Okay. All this new technology. Okay, so just so everybody has a good idea of, again, of which would count toward those 2,500 and 5,000 square foot thresholds. The red is the, there you go. Landscaped area, grass, hardscaped area, which would not count, would of course be the footprint of your house, driveways, walkways, any backyard patios, and like I mentioned before, any non-irrigated areas of your property. A pool surface would count toward that area, it's considered a, a water, the water feature uses water and therefore it would count toward that area.
Greg, just a clarification?
Yes.
For the non-irrigated, that means, what if you're hand irrigating? I mean, you're sprinkling, but you don't have a system in there? Is that, does not count then, or?
That does not count.
Okay.
Basically, when you're, when we're reviewing these plans, if you have irrigated pipes going in there, if it's non-irrigated, it does not count. Okay, so now I'm moving on to the, to the what, of how we comply with this, with the state mo, with the state requirement. We can either use the state model, which is like many other state models and laws, it's very confusing. We can adopt our own ordinance, as long as we find that it's at least as effective as the state model ordinance. And Department of Water Resources ultimately will be the ones that determine whether or not a local jurisdiction's ordinance is as effective as the state, state model. Or we can adopt the Orange County, the model, which is what we're recommending. And this was created, I'll talk a little bit more about this, but later, but this was created with MODOC and the League of, the Orange County Division of the League of Cities, they really spearheaded the effort to get all the local jurisdictions together, create one ordinance that everybody could use, so that all the local landscape architects and developers would be familiar with it, be no surprise that city, county-wide essentially. And this is what we're recommending, and we'll talk a little bit, bit more about that county model right now.
Has this one been approved by the state?
Yes, this one has been reviewed, approved by the state, and they're okay with everything in there. So like I said, the model was a collaboration spearheaded by the League. So like I said, the model was a collaboration spearheaded by the League of Cities and MODOC. Like I just mentioned, Ms. Gardner asked, the state has found that it meets all the requirements of AB 1881, provides consistency to everything. And basically how it's set up, there's two documents. There's the ordinance that sets the standards, the maximum applied water allowance standards, and then there's a separate design feature, design manual that lays out all the details. Now, the reason we want that separate is so that manual can be updated when necessary, gives a little flexibility to the city, so we're not locked in on any specifics as far as whether it's irrigation design or irrigation technology or any other types of features that we think we can change and still be consistent with the state requirements. One of the key issues there, the key pluses of the Orange County model, is the self-certification process. I'll go ahead and talk about that right now because when a plan comes in, it's going to have a big, big stack of documents and calculations and other items in it. And the self-certification process allows the city to accept the sign-off of a licensed landscape professional. Basically, they sign off, they give their stamp, they say this complies with your ordinance and we will not have to do any individual plan checking of all those materials. We'll check to make sure they have all the required documents and all the plans, calculations in there, but we're not going to go back in and check it. Of course, you know, during the time we're looking at these projects and they come in, if we see something, you know, a big project come in and, you know, if there's something glaring, well, sure, we'll, you know, catch stuff like that.
So, does that, initially, you were required to have the licensed landscape architect? Is that still a requirement, or could you say, no, I just want the city to?
It's still required by the preparer. Now, the state model does not have this self-certification, so the city would have to have somebody qualified to check all these calculations and all these documents, and I don't think, may or may not be anybody on city staff that's qualified to do that, I don't think so.
Are there any licensed professionals, like nurserymen, people like that, can do it in addition to landscape architects, or is this limited to landscape architects?
I'm going to have Shane.
Shane Berkeley, Water Conservation Coordinator, yes. You can have even a general contractor, as long as there's a licensed professional in the contractor field as well as a licensed architect, landscape architect, can go ahead and self-certify that in behalf of the applicant. And therefore, we would have to just file, acknowledge the documents have been satisfied, and then we can file that away. Now, should water consumption spike over the years, we have that documentation to go back to, to be able to do our own audits upon that. And that can be done via code enforcement or even building department, the inspectors there. As long as we have documentation that show what the plantings were, what type of irrigation and how much calculation of the maximum applied water allowance, all those documents there are together, then we can take a look at it and do the audit. But to answer the question, yes, a landscape architect or even a general contractor that is licensed in the state of California can certify these.
So again, we're recommending adoption of our version of the Orange County model. Now, we really, in the draft version, it's essentially the same as the model, I mean, it's formatted for our city and for our municipal code, but essentially, there are no noteworthy differences. So right now, I want to talk a little bit about the review process and what would happen if somebody would have to come in, say a homeowner did have quite a bit of landscaping and they wanted to come in and submit their plans. If permits required, they would have to abide by these regulations, they'd come in, they would submit it as part of their plan check package or as part of their building permit plans or as part of discretionary permit approval. So if there's a use permit, a track map or something like that, they would-
Before you get into that, can you comment on, this is in the applicability section of the ordinance.
Okay.
And you touched on it, but I don't, I'm still confused if you could look at number three on page seven, if you could explain to me exactly how that applies. I'm losing the language when we get towards the end of it. Which are otherwise subject to a discretionary approval of a landscape plan or which otherwise require a ministerial permit for a landscape for water feature?
Right, what that is intending to say, and maybe we can revise that language if we need to, that's intending to say if there's a ministerial permit, building permit required, or if there's any type of discretionary permit, for example, a use permit, then this would apply. If neither of those permits are required, then this ordinance would not apply.
It would apply if they had 5,000 square feet.
If they have 5,000 square feet.
2,500 square feet, depending which category they have.
That's correct.
So, if they don't have 5,000 square feet, but they have a discretionary permit, it applies?
No.
It does not apply?
The first, the first threshold is 5,000 square feet. If they don't have 5,000 square feet of landscaping, then this does not apply, you stop there.
Okay.
And we can, you know, again, we can work with this language if-
I'm going to have to think about that, I'm not sure I still understand it, but I want to hold this up.
Any other questions, Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, so it's 5,000 new, but then it's a 50%, if you have 50% of your landscaping that you're redoing, is there a, again, a square footage you have to be, is it's half of 5,000 square feet or just half of what's existing?
The 5,000 square feet has to be, it's basically 10,000 square feet in that case, if you're rehabbing park.
So we don't have a whole lot of properties that that's going to affect?
No. I think we mentioned in the staff report that there were, maybe, we ran some numbers and there's a number in the staff report saying 15% of the properties, the residential properties in the city might apply.
I think that's hard.
It's almost impossible to quantify. I can show you a couple of examples of two side-by-side lots with different developments, one that where this would apply and one where it would not.
Do we currently require any kind of permit if you're redoing your landscaping? So we wouldn't necessarily see those anyway unless people are really conversant with this. It's mostly the new stuff that we're going to be looking at.
It's new stuff, but a lot of people come in and they'll, you have to get plumbing permits for the irrigation controls. So that's where we catch, that's where we look, somebody comes in for that, we see if they exceed these thresholds, then we have to have them apply.
What kind of plumbing permit do you have to have? I mean, if you already have a stubout-
Sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but if it's existing, I'm not sure what exactly the building department requirements are. I know for new irrigation, they have to get plumbing permits. If you're already, if you have most of the pipes in there and the permit's not required by the building department, then this would not apply.
Are there other questions?
Again, on page seven, on B1, where you say the water-efficient landscape ordinance does not apply to the first one, could you explain, again, exactly what that means and then how do we enforce that? B1 on page seven.
Yeah, this is kind of enforcing, I'm going to let Shane again touch on this one.
B1 speaks to there the replacement of plantings in the guidelines as well as this portion here. If you're simply replacing plantings and you're not doing any type of structural work, maybe putting in a pool, replacing any irrigation, then really what they're asking you to do, and this is more upon the merits of water conservation and the culture therein, is to replace with lower water use plantings. Now, if someone wants to tear out their turf and replace it with turf, yet are not doing anything when it comes to a building permit such as a plumbing permit for the irrigation backflow, and that's what they'd go out there and look for, is the backflow, the building inspectors look for that, then you would not need to, A, get involved with this whole documentation package, nor would you need to get a permit. So essentially, what this exemption is, is we're asking them, if you want to replace plantings, please do so with lower consumption, water-consuming plantings. The regulations, or I should say, the enforcement factor of that, should council would like code enforcement to go out and make sure that that's being done, it would be more of a catch it in the progress of it happening, but I don't know if that's the way we want to go. Right now, there is no enforcement mechanism, nor is there an auditing perspective from the state or the county.
Okay, well, I have another concern, and that is, it's not specifically stated here, but somewhere in here, at least I'm under the impression that if you have a planting program and you go to a lower ET rate, then you don't have to go through the certification process. But I guess my question is, if I'm out there and have any project and I'm out there working and who's going to make the determination whether my, I have a lower ET rate or not, if I'm just out there doing it and I say I don't have one, or I'm going to a lower ET rate, I don't have a plan that's certified, who makes determination and how do we enforce this ordinance in those kinds of situations?
Again, this is something that would be, at this point in time, is unenforceable. However, it does meet the state standard when it comes to the model ordinance, that's why it's there. So, to, the short answer is, there is no enforcement mechanism and it's more of the honor system, if you will. And when you go to purchase any new plantings, 90% of the nurserymen know exactly what are lower water use plantings. So, again, if you're just simply replacing something, they're asking you to do it with a lower water use, it's nothing that is mandated because there's no guidelines nor documentation package that needs to be submitted.
Okay, then one final question on applicability, then you can get on to this other stuff. If I have a project that otherwise this ordinance applies to and I decide to not touch any of my plantings, so I'm not touching the ET rates of any of my landscape plan, but I decide to replace my irrigation system, what is the applicability of the ordinance in those situations?
That's a good question, you have that one? I think on your previous question, always keep in mind the 5,000 square feet too. So, I know that, I know it's a, there's probably something here that needs to be answered and I know you pointed that out, but the 5,000 square feet's a pretty, it's a pretty high threshold, but anyway, I'll let Shane follow up on that one.
The definition, I believe, that rehabilitated landscape would mean, complete, under this portion here, would mean that it has to be a complete redo. Doesn't that mean that there has to be grading being done, but it means a whole new irrigation system and replacement of plantings. So when you have that, those two components, as well as a threshold of 5,000 square feet of irrigable area, then you, it would apply. So if you're simply replacing your existing irrigation system, then obviously it would be incumbent upon you to go ahead and use lower ET, meaning the valves that are now available, which generally speaking, most of them are water-efficient from off the shelves you can purchase. And then also, we have a, another stopgap, if you will, of water efficiency is our water conservation ordinance that was passed last month. So there's some different ways that we can maintain the water use for the area.
Thank you.
Any further questions? You have a little more wrap-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch again on the, if a project did happen to be subject to these requirements, again, it'd be administered by the, by the planning department, and they would submit what's called a landscape documentation package and includes all those requirements that I was mentioning earlier, the calculations and the study soil management plan, irrigation design plan, those types of issues. And that would have to be submitted and with the self-certification prior to building permit issuance or prior to approval of a discretionary project. The second component of that is the certificate of completion package, and that's basically prior to the final of the building permit. They would have to, again, the form that signed off that says that the project has been installed in compliance with the approved plans, and it would also set it, you know, it'd have a few extra details in there, such as irrigation scheduling, maintenance schedules. And then, number two there, which is an irrigated audit report, it gives you two options for that, the homeowner or the project developer could do a one-time audit, or they can enroll into something such as MODOC's Landscape Performance Program, and that's where it's free of charge, and Joe Berg here is from MODOC and he might be able to talk about that a little more if you have questions. But essentially, it's something that a homeowner can apply to, it's free of charge, MODOC kind of watches their water consumption for them and sends them notices from time to time to let them know if they're, basically, their water use is kind of jiving with what their plans showed. And with that, that concludes our presentation, but of course, we have Joe Berg here from MODOC and Lacey Kelly from the League of Cities here as well, as well as the rest of the staff, if you have any questions.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Lacey Kelly's presence, who's the Executive Director of the League of Cities for Orange County Division, and we're all, I think, very grateful for the work that was done to develop the model ordinance, which I understand has been adopted by every other city in Orange County, we appreciate that. Thank you for being with us tonight, Lacey. Councilmember Gardner?
When we first began talking about a landscape ordinance, which was a year ago maybe, and this came up, what the state was doing is like, man, those landscape architects have some good lobbyists, I mean, talk about and make work for them. But it seems like this is an easy thing for us to do, instead of trying to go through the whole process of creating our own ordinance and then going through the process of trying to get it approved, to just, this has had a lot of work put into it, and so I would suggest that we adopt it.
What happens if, in order to get around this ordinance, someone wants to start phasing their renovation thing, how does that all work? I can see where, you know, somebody might try and get creative on that.
I'm turning it over to Shane again, he's-
Yeah, that was something, playing advocate, if it was me, I probably would do that. But what you could do is, we have a proviso in here that it has to be complete within one year. So if a person wanted to do the front half of their landscaping, the front of their home, and it did not meet that threshold of 5,000 square feet, that would be fine, you don't have to be involved with this documentation package. However, if there was, the whole parcel was going to be done and it was going to be irrigable area of 5,000, it would be. So if you wanted to phase that out and if it wasn't within the year, time of, span of each other, then you would not be applicable under this section here.
Well, I guess, you know, I think this ordinance has so many holes and you can drive a truck through it, but, you know, quite frankly, I think if the state was serious about wanting to conserve water, would do more in the way of educating people and getting information out on irrigation systems and plantings, and I don't think most homeowners realize how much money is wasted in a water bill. A typical, you know, five, six, 7,000 square foot lot, they can spend over half of their water bill on irrigation. And I don't know how many people really realize that. And if we're really looking to conserve water, I mean, that seems to be a better way to go than, you know, adopting ordinances like this, but, you know, like Councilman Curry said, every other city's adopted it and the state's mandating it, so I'm not sure else you go with it than that. But like I said, you can just drive a truck through this thing, it doesn't make, it doesn't even make any sense to me.
So you want, you're suggesting that we do our own with no holes?
No.
[laughing].
I am not.
But I agree with you on the education, and Shane's been doing a great job with that.
This item is on our agenda tonight during the regular council meeting for adoption. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Okay, it's not?
No, no, it's not tonight, we bring it back in two weeks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, additionally, you mentioned Lacey and Joe, I wanted to thank them as well, and I told them to be here at 5:00, so you're not late, we just bumped up this item, so I appreciate your being here, thank you.
Okay, are we ready for the Poseidon item now?
Craig? I'm going to ask Craig Justice to come back up. So, back on your agenda then, this is item SS 5.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Today, we'd like to, staff would like to provide a little discussion forum of the current status of the Poseidon ocean water desalination project. And with the information that we're planning to submit documents to more formally get involved in the project, there's a letter of intent, which is essentially says that we're interested in the project, it's non-binding, it gives some volumes that we'd be, may be amiable to purchasing should the project go forward, that's about 3,000 to 8,000 acre feet. There's a memorandum of understanding, which allows us to get involved with the Poseidon work group that's been formed of municipal water district of Orange County and other retail agencies, there's now sitting at the table discussing how to move water around, the merits of the project, integration, infrastructure needed, and also purchase water agreements and costs. The third- The third document is a confidentiality agreement that allows the city to sit at the table and talk finances on this private venture. All of these documents have been vetted through the office of the city attorney for review. A lot of the other agencies that are involved have also reviewed the documents. They're all non-binding, so we look forward, we look to submit those and staff believes it's a prudent step to at least sit at the table and to see, let the project play out to see if it's in the best interest of the city and bring the information back to council at some future date.
I'd just like to make a clarification at the bottom of the page. This was presented to Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee.
Oh, thank you.
The committee did not take any position on the merits of the Poseidon project, but did suggest to be moved forward, that if it's going to be a project, that we should be at the table. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gardner. Just real quickly, you know, why would we want to sit at the table? I think that's important. Why, in my, in staff's professional opinion, is we have two primary sources of water in the city, groundwater and imported water. Groundwater's 62 percent of our allotment, imported water's about 38 percent. But those have inherent shortfalls and things that could go wrong with that supply. It could be an earthquake. Groundwater, there could be a problem with groundwater quality that allows us to decrease pumping. Imported water costs, who knows what's going to happen with the Bay Delta situation? That's up in there as far as my professional opinion. So this allows us, another source of water, to potentially bring to the city and, you know, give us another tool in our toolbox, and that essentially, you know, increases our portfolio. It's a high-quality water. It's filtered water. So the ocean water stays pretty consistent in its water quality, goes through a filtration system, so what you get out of it is pretty consistent. It doesn't have variability in water quality. They can essentially make a designer water as clean as you want it. It also is local. It's right off in Huntington Beach, close to us. An intriguing aspect to the project is potentially a direct connection to the city's well-filled line from the facility. It's about, less than a mile connection point. So there's some unique aspects and intriguing possibilities. The sequencing is, if submitting these documents allows us to sit at the table, we'd probably return back to council with an update roughly in summer, around summertime, with another status of the project, leading into, where this is all leading is into potential purchase water agreements by MODOC and the various retail agencies to actually purchase water from the facility, from Poseidon Resources. So if there's no questions, I'd like to, I have two gentlemen here with me, Richard Bell, the senior engineer from MODOC, who I invited to give kind of regional perspective on the project, and I've also invited Scott Maloney, vice president, Poseidon Resources, the developer, to answer any questions you might have specific to the project and where they are as a private company and venture.
Before we get started, one quick question.
Sure.
Approximately how many acre-feet of water does a city use per year?
Acre-feet? Good question. George, do you have that off the top of your head? You stumped me. Good question.
You know, combined, it's all about 17,000. You need to talk about water and imports later.
Yeah.
So in other words, what we're really looking at here is that we have a need for around 17,000 acre-feet.
Yes.
There's a potential, at least I'm looking at, as far as benefits of participation, it says we could perhaps get from 3,000 to 8,000 acre-feet from the source, so we could get perhaps up to 50 percent of our total needs. I just want to try to put in perspective-
Correct.
...what we're looking at from the standpoint of how this fits into the other sources that we have.
Yeah. That's a good point. If I might add something. Yeah, it's a fairly complicated procedure we go through on, where do we get our water? There's water allocations for the groundwater supply. They change, imported water allocations also change over time. But this would allow us to have another source of water to better manage our overall sources of water. Say, for instance, the Miss Waters of Orange County decreases our allotment for groundwater, this would allow us to, you know, have water available to offset that potentially. And I might add, the groundwater's fairly inexpensive, so we want to maximize our groundwater pumping. And probably where we want to take the place of is this water to maybe augment or take the place of maybe imported water, not groundwater. So it just gives us a way to better move water around and get water.
I do, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just to follow on that point, which I'm glad Don raised, so it's, it would be possible then for the city to have, in effect, complete control over its water sourcing between the groundwater wells that we own and sourcing from Poseidon, obviously subject to allocation requirements on the groundwater. But this 3,000 to 8,000 acre-feet of water that could be available from Poseidon, would that ultimate number also be subject to allocation by Poseidon or the group of people that are participating? In other words, would we have free availability, freedom to have the full availability of the 8,000 at the price, whatever that price might be?
We'd have full availability under the purchase water agreement. That would be our water to purchase from, directly from Poseidon without intervention from anybody else.
Councilmember Diggle?
Well, that is really a critical defining issue is whether or not it's considered a local supply. And if it is local supply, then it would be exempt from that MET water budget. But if MET were to do cutbacks, the question becomes, would the D-SAL be subject to those cutbacks as well? Or is it outside of those, outside of that MET budget?
My understanding, it's outside of the MET budget. This is a private water supply.
So it is, so it's designated local supply?
Correct. Yeah.
Or maybe MET doesn't agree with that?
Richard, Richard from Metropolitan Water Districts of Orange County might, do you have anything to add on that?
Please use the microphone. State your name again.
My voice needs an amplification. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. That issue is actually a little bit up in the air. Is that better?
Yeah, but state your name again for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Richard Bell. I'm the principal engineer at the district, and I'm also the project manager of the South Orange Coastal Ocean Desolidization Project down Dana Point, excuse me, and have been participating in this project a bit. Kevin Hunt, general manager, and Carl Sekul, our assistant general manager, unfortunately could not be here tonight. They had other commitments at other agencies for, anyway. So the issue that you asked, I can talk about some of the regional issues too, some of the regional benefits, but the way Metropolitan has dealt with local supplies, I understand it, and it's a fuzzy issue right now. It will become part of local supply later because there are no, there are no D-SAL projects yet. They didn't incorporate it in their system at this point in time, but it will become a local supply, just like recycled water would be. So we're pretty certain of that. So it's just not, that's a fuzziness of right now where it is.
Okay. And what would be MET's process to officially designate a local supply?
Oh, it's when they go through their water allocation process. You know, right now, they have to revise that process, and as you all are aware, MET cut back the imported supplies this year by 15 percent and 10 percent of the regional demand, and because of a variety of factors in the Delta. But anyway, that, once this project gets further along, there's many agencies and, you know, their family who want to get that done. I think Carlsbad down in San Diego will actually be the first place where that changes. That became part of the, they did get that project into the local resources program just the last couple of months, so that'll happen.
Thank you.
I also have available for questions, Mr. Scott Maloney from Poseidon Resources, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Do you want to have any questions, Mr. Maloney? Thank you for being here, sir. Anything else?
No. I'm open for additional questions, and if there aren't any-
Any other questions for Craig?
Just come to us for action.
You know, actually, I think what we're just looking for is those documents to participate. We wanted to bring it forward so you could see what we're doing. This isn't the only alternate source of water that we're looking at. There are other water, we looked at water sources from the colored water wells in Mesa. I think it's important for Newport to realize that the Delta issues, there's no short-term fix for that, and that we are subject, not to scaretat, but we are subject to a failure of the levees or the loss of our import supply. So I think it's, you know, appropriate that we look at alternate sources. This project, we would be giving to the, at least the documents to the city manager to submit the non-binding agreements to participate, but feel, of course, that, you know, you should be in the loop and know what we're doing and as part of our water resources in the next couple of years. So actually, not really a decision, but maybe just a thumbs up to move ahead.
Well, I think it's wonderful that we're moving ahead with this because obviously, water's going to be such an issue, and we wouldn't want to be sitting there and having all this nice water going someplace else.
I see no harm in joining the work group. I think that's a good idea, and I think we ought to monitor what MET's doing and make sure that it does become designated local supply because I think that's going to be-
It's a big deal.
It is.
Correct. Thank you.
I think, I agree with all of that. I think that we have a unique opportunity with this source as well as the Mesa colored water sources because of our geographical proximity to both of these things, to have the ability to get a supplement to our system to where we can stay farther away from needing to have Metropolitan water. I think that we need to really pursue that from whatever direction we can. I think one of the things I'd like to comment and compliment our city's system on was, I think that if you looked carefully, there was a, was or is an outage in South County area to where we are going to be able to utilize our system plus the reservoir to help some of the agencies south of us-
Correct.
...in the water supply system. And it has to do with, because the city of Newport Beach had planned ahead and had additional capacity, we were able to do things like that. And I think it's very important for us to recognize that we need to look to the future and be as aggressive as we can in trying to search out any additional sources of water that we can economically add to our system.
Thank you, Councilmember Webb. I would also say, first of all, there's some controversy about the project in Huntington Beach, and we're not inserting ourselves into that controversy or taking sides with any decision that the city of Huntington Beach may make, but I think we are very prudently taking the steps to position ourselves to purchase water should this facility be built and should the cost be economical to the city. I think it's important for us to be able to understand the economics of that, and I understand why the developer needs to know what the potential market's going to be for the project moving forward at this critical time, and I think that's a very prudent thing to do, and support this action. Mayor Pro Tim Himm?
Yeah, I just, I'll echo the comments previously made, but just underscore the point that the pursuit of water independence for the city of Newport Beach would be a critical goal to achieve over the coming, perhaps, five to 10 years. That would really be a tremendous strategic asset for this city.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The time is now on the agenda for public comments for any item not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay. Thank you. We will now adjourn until a regular-